Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Today is Wednesday, September 24th, and we're glad you could join us here this evening. I'll begin with calling the meeting to order. Now I'd like to welcome Pastor Jeff Barnes of Friends Church to give the invocation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Barnes?
Would you stand with me while we pray? Let's pray. Lord, we invite you into our presence tonight, and we thank you for your love and your grace. We love you because you first loved us. Not sure exactly why you would love us, the creatures that we are, but we're so grateful that you do. I wish we could love you as you deserve to be loved, so help us in that, Lord. Lord, grant us your joy and peace tonight. Help us to be patient and kind as we seek to serve our community for the good of the community. Help us to be faithful to your desire and your purpose for us. Lord, help us to serve with self-discipline and the love of Christ. And we pray this in the loving name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. So as we begin the meeting tonight, we have several ceremonial items to start with. And one additional one that is not on the agenda. Our Public Services Director of 31 years. Service to the town of Kernersville in 15 years as Public Services Director. Doran Maupin announced his retirement at the end of the month, and some of the Aldermen were not able to attend the farewell reception we had. So I'd like to invite Doran forward and thank him here at this, come all the way forward, at this meeting for his years of service and make a special presentation. His accomplishments are noteworthy and lengthy, but we appreciate his longtime service to the town of Kernersville since 1995 and all the technological innovations he brought to this department. You may not be aware, but public services encompasses all kinds of things. It's not just road construction and repair, collections like bulk item, household trash, snow removal, street repair, engineering services, GIS services, all kinds of things that made life in Kernersville better. And we appreciate all that you have done for the town of Kernersville, and we would like to present you with this flag.
I'd like to say something. At a reception the other day, I mentioned that I actually came here, it was almost by accident in 1995, because as far as I remember, I'd never even been to Kernersville. But I ended up with the position as an engineering technician when I started here. But as I told everyone at the reception, I didn't stay here 31 years by accident. This has been a great place, and it's been an honor. And I appreciate everyone's support, this board, previous boards, my staff, and the citizens. This town is a great place to live, and it's a great place to work. I thank you.
The second presentation today is to the fire department. Chief Alderman is stepping forward. This is Chief Scott Alderman. As Mayor of Kernersville on behalf of the board, it's an honor and privilege to be able to recognize individual accomplishments, special observances in our community, and special weeks, and special efforts. This is a very important effort, Fire Prevention Week 2025. And although the town of Kernersville, if you live here, if you drive here and seen the banners, if you've paid attention to public service announcements, Fire Prevention Week has been an important observance for many, many years. It's the dedication to fire prevention that keeps a single building fire downtown from taking out an entire community, as was happening in our country in 1850s and that sort of thing. It's the reason that the town of Kernersville bought a fire engine in 1923 that we celebrated restoring recently. But fire prevention throughout the year is very important, and October's a good excuse for preschools and schools to invite the fire department in, for the children to learn. But fire safety and fire prevention is important for teenagers, young adults, older adults, and everybody in between. We all know about meeting at the mailbox in case of an emergency. And if you don't know, make that plan with your family for ways out and to have a safe place outside your house to meet, at a neighbor's house, at the mailbox, somewhere away from where the danger is. And we know about changing the batteries in the smoke detectors. But one thing that is something that the fire prevention effort is this year from our fire department and nationally, is to bring attention to the lithium ion batteries and safe disposal, because they have been the cause of many fires in recent years. And we all have a lot of them in our house, if you really think about it, all of these discarded electronics. It is a good time to start recycling them and disposing of them properly. And the town with the leadership of Doran has had electronics recycling every January, but there's also the Three RC Center in Forsyth County, if you're a Forsyth County resident, and there are opportunities to dispose safely through companies. Some of the companies that sell electronics have recycling programs. So this is a week to think about the use of our lithium ion batteries in our smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, and toys. So it's quite a range of lists, but the theme is charge into fire safety, and we encourage all to charge into fire safety this week with Kernersville Fire Department to prevent fires. Thank you, Chief, for your efforts, for the education efforts and outreach of our firemen. Our firefighters are very busy this month with the tours and the public education, but it's a service we provide all year long, so we appreciate everything that you and your staff do.
I just want to quickly say thank you to you, Mayor. By the way, I'm going to hire you as a fire and life safety educator. You covered everything very well just a minute ago. I also want to say thank you to the board as well for supporting this proclamation and recognizing the importance of Fire Safety Week. And really, it's Fire Safety Month for us. We spent a lot of time in October visiting schools, like you said, and talking to others out in the community specifically about, for this year, lithium ion batteries. But we also do a lot of fire education throughout the year as well. And if anyone is interested in a public education program, just visit our website, go to the Town of Kernersville website, under the Fire Rescue page, we have an electronic form that you can fill out that goes to our fire and life safety educator, and he'll reach out to you and schedule an event. So we look forward to partnering with you to make Kernersville a safe place to live. Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to have come forward Heidi Tuft, the Chamber Ladies, and Ernie Pages. Amanda, Lisa, and Chris, if you don't know them, Heidi and Ernie. So we have been working with other Town of Kernersville staff to plan an incredible celebration for our community in the upcoming year. You check your calendars, next year, we all know, is the year 2026. But if you think about it, it's a really special anniversary of the United States. You may have heard of it, you may not have been thinking about it yet. I saw the first TV ad on the national observance of it recently, from GMC trucks, of all things, about the patriotism and what it means to be an American. And so all together, we will celebrate with communities across the nation, America 250, the semi-quintcentennial or the 250th anniversary of our nation. So we are also planning in connection with that, as are other communities throughout the United States, special observances during the year. And the one we've been working on is a celebration of Kernersville's 155th birthday. So our local effort is Kernersville 155, America 250. So you'll hear a lot more about it, but we're planning a special event for April with daytime activities, a nighttime concert, and the Chamber of Commerce, Kernersville Chamber of Commerce is partnering with the town to bring efforts by the downtown merchants into the celebration and also to help with the event. So we are very, very excited about this. More details to be released soon, but mark your calendars to look for special announcements for April for the Town of Kernersville to help us celebrate. Some of the other organizations have already planned patriotic things throughout the year, and so they'll be advertising those soon. So again, it'll be a very special year for the Town of Kernersville. So in that regard, I'd like to present to Ernie, Heidi, and the Chamber of Commerce a special proclamation. So whereas the United States of America is celebrating the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence on July 4th, 2026, and throughout the entire year is celebrating the semi-quintcentennial year of our nation, whereas this celebration is an opportunity to pause and reflect on our nation's past, to honor the contributions of all Americans, and to look to the future. And whereas on March 31st, 1871, the Town of Kernersville was incorporated, and in 2026, we'll be celebrating its 155th anniversary of incorporation. Whereas the Town of Kernersville, working together with the Kernersville Chamber of Commerce, is planning a special birthday celebration for the Town of Kernersville, now therefore, I, Don Morgan, as Mayor of the Town of Kernersville and on behalf of the Board of Aldermen, do hereby recognize Kernersville Parks and Recreation, the Kernersville Chamber of Commerce, and the Kernersville Museum in this important effort to celebrate America 250, KBL 155, in the Town of Kernersville. And I urge all residents to join in the celebration of history and community to commemorate the 155th anniversary of the incorporation of the town and the semi-quintcentennial of the United States. So I'll present these now. The ladies. Any comments? Would you like to say something?
Hi, my name is Heidi Tuft. I'm the Museum Administrator for the Town of Kernersville, and we are so excited to welcome you to join us with America 250, KBL 155. The museum and Parks and Rec and I have partnered together, because I am a division of Parks and Rec, to bring you a great day, great weekend of history of Kernersville, and we can't wait to celebrate with you. Okay? Thank you.
All right. That concludes the ceremonial presentations of our meeting. If you're here just for the ceremonial items, we will take no offense at all if you leave at this point in time, but if you'd like to stay for the rest, we will be proceeding to the rest of our agenda. As you see me typing on my computer, we went paperless a while ago, and so my computer logged me out as we were doing the presentation, so I've got to get back to the documents for the meeting. All right. Next, we are to our public hearings. We have a policy printed on the front of the agenda that you may have picked up on the back. It's displayed also on the screen. When an agenda item is denoted as a public hearing, persons attending shall be permitted to address the Board of Aldermen regarding the item under consideration. Those speaking in favor speaking first, and those against speaking second. Proponents and opponents shall each be given 20 minutes of time to speak, and may choose to allow one speaker to utilize that time, or choose to allocate the time amongst different speakers. In the event that either proponents or opponents have not designated a speaker or speakers to represent their view, the mayor shall divide the 20 minutes by the number of speakers wishing to address the Board of Aldermen, and each speaker shall be given that time within which to express his or her comments, ideas, and concerns. After the opponent speaks, the mayor will allow the proponents five minutes for rebuttal. If the proponents choose to exercise this option, the opponents will also have five minutes for rebuttal. In the event that the proponents do not present a rebuttal, then the opponents shall be given no further time to speak. And we do have speaker cards in the back, on the table. Many of you filled them out on the way in. If you'd like to fill out a speaker card to speak on a public hearing or a public session item, if you could do so, and hand it to our town attorney, who's here in the gray jacket, our town manager in the purple jacket, or our town clerk, Keith Hooker. All right. That brings us to our public hearings. We've got public hearing 1A and 1B that we will hear as a joint public hearing, and then we will take two separate votes. We'll vote first on the development plan, and then we'll vote second on the rezoning. The first is Item 1A, Public Hearing Kernersville Development Plan. This is an item that was continued from July 8th. Curtis Swisher, Agent for the Town of Kernersville, for consideration of an amendment to the Kernersville Development Plan to amend the land use plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and to amend the thoroughfare plan to remove the proposed Brookdale Forest extension and the proposed Slate Road extension for a property generally located east of Brookford Road and south of I-40, containing the acreage and the PIN number as indicated on the agenda, zoning docket KDP 76. And rezoning, Item B, also continued from July 8th. Raymond D. Thomas, Agent for Keystone Group Incorporated, owners, requesting a single-phase conditional rezoning from the zoning classifications as listed in the agenda for a property located east of Brookford Road and south of I-40 in the acreage and PIN as indicated. Petitioner requests approval of conditional use site plan titled Brookford Village, zoning docket K 791 A1. And then consideration of ordinance, rezoning said property. We'll begin with a presentation by our community development staff, and I'll recognize Ms. Catherine Garner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. KDP 76 is the land use plan amendment. It's a requested amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential for a portion of PIN 689502-2002. You can see the portion of the entire parcel that's highlighted in red in the area in yellow on the map. The land use plan amendment is recommended because of the changing environment in the area. The Town's strategic sewer investment, expanded sewer in the Lower Abbott's Creek and Reedy Fork areas many years ago, that's been utilized to attract major development economic providers and medical providers. So the medical center, the VA Health Clinic, Moses Cone, FedEx, Amazon, and other logistics companies. Increased economic development has then in turn increased demand for housing. So if we've got more places for people to work, we need places for people to live. And then demographic shifts have led to more requests for higher-density development and smaller units on smaller lots. So the requested land use plan amendment is for a medium-density residential, which in our land use plan is defined as zero to seven units per acre. It is intended for areas in the central part of Kernersville and the north side of North Main Street, and intended to provide places for moderately priced housing in different options. So the existing land use plan, you can see on the left, low-density residential is yellow, business center is across I-40 in blue, and then the proposed is on the right. So we've got the commercial across the interstate that has just been recently approved for another apartment project, and then the medium-density residential highlighted in red and then shaded in the salmon color on the south side. That's the parcel that's under question tonight. The site's proposal is less than five units per acre, so it fits squarely within the range provided by medium-density residential's definition. And it is intended to accommodate low-density pedestrian-oriented sites in communities containing duplexes, twin homes, multifamily, and townhouse residential buildings with three, four, and five units, and similar residential unit uses at a maximum overall density of five units per acre. That's the definition of RM5 and the zoning ordinance. So the density proposed fits within the land use plan's definition and is meeting the RM5 definition as well. Now with regards to the thoroughfare plan, the existing thoroughfare plan shows a proposed road connection, an east-west road connection at Brookdale Forest and connecting over to Voltaire, and then a slate road extension running north to south to connect to that. With the plan, if it were to be adopted, those roads would become irrelevant, and they would not connect. So we're proposing to clean up the thoroughfare plan as part of this, if it's approved, so that those roads are removed from the thoroughfare plan. We added some additional language to the resolution from the staff report to quantify that and make it very clear that we would be removing those from the thoroughfare plan, which is adopted as part of our greater land use plan. Staff recommends approval of the updated resolution to designate this PIN as medium-density residential and remove Brookdale Forest Extension and Slate Road Extension from the thoroughfare plan. At the June Planning Board meeting, Planning Board made a recommendation to deny the updated resolution and the requested changes. And all members who were present voted in favor of denial. And with regards to the rezonings, the proposed rezoning is a request from RS 20 to RM5C with proposed uses of residential building twin home and residential building townhouse. Now, there have been some changes in the site plan since the site plan and rezoning request was originally presented to Planning Board in June, so the changes have been colored in blue. And I tried to note what was previously proposed, previously shown at Planning Board, because I know we have a lot of neighbors who are here for this, who are also here in June. So the unit count has dropped slightly to 181, which is reduced from 184 at Planning Board. This drops the units per acre from 4.29 to 4.22. So not considerable, but it is a reduction on both fronts. The surrounding zoning in Kernersville zoning jurisdiction is RS 20. That's all the pink color. This is the edge of the ETJ, so RS 30 Forsyth County is just to the south of this parcel. Across I-40, it's a little bit of a mix of zoning districts from highway business special, general business conditional, medical business park, and general industrial. So you can see this area is the ETJ in this area. So our ETJ is on many sides of our Kernersville town limits, but this portion highlighted in orange is the area between Kernersville Medical Parkway and Brookford Road to the south and the edge of the ETJ, showing the area that is under our zoning control currently. They're not in our town limits, but they would receive permits from us for any construction or alterations to their property, because this is intended and thought of that one day Kernersville would expand through this area, and that's why it's classified in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, so that if and when it is annexed, which the applicant would propose annexation if approved, it's required as a condition, then this area would over time be removed from the ETJ. It wouldn't become part of the town limits. So this is a rough outline of where that parcel sits within the ETJ in this corner of Kernersville. So the proposed uses under this rezoning are residential building townhouse and residential building twin home. The UDO defines these in terms of the number of dwelling units in each building and how they fit on the zoning lot. Each of them are on Each of them are on their own zoning lot, so they are all considered single-family attached housing. The conditional use district site plan becomes the plan for development if it's approved. The site plan shows 181 units in three different configurations, the traditional townhouse rows, twin homes, and then townhouses in groups of four that are clustered around a garage. They share common area mail kiosk and on-site paved walking trail plus sidewalks, and then there is a small amenity area. Landscape buffer yards are required along adjacent single-family residential property, a 15-foot buffer yard along Brookford Village, and a 30-foot buffer yard along the western, southern, and eastern property lines. So this was the site plan that was shown to Planning Board. This is no longer the applicable site plan. And so this is the new site plan, which looks very similar. You would really need to see both of them side by side to discern the difference. They've shifted all the development out of the floodplain area so that there's no floodplain fill required. There's no fill in the floodplain in this. So what it did was swap some residential units with the common area. The common area is then pushed closer to the west fork of the Deep River, which you can see on the left-hand side or the middle of the parcel. And then it puts those residential units in the common area's place closer to Brookford Road. So that's where the reduction of the three units came from, is removing the fill that would be utilized on the floodplain. The ITE Trip Generation Manual classifies this use as multifamily low-rise development. It does have fewer trips than single-family residential per that ITE manual. So it classifies or estimates that about 7.32 trips per dwelling a day. So it would be just under 1,347. This is still on that old number. So three units, we're looking at 21 less trips over a 24-hour period. So morning AM and PM peak travel is the highest estimated hour in the like seven to nine and four to six windows when people are leaving for work and school and coming home from work and school. So about 100 trips in the morning and just over 100 trips in the highest hour in that window in the afternoon. NC DOT's average annual daily trip count for Brookford Road has held steady at 450 trips per day since 2019. The highest traffic count on Brookford Road was actually in 2002. We think that it's likely a reduction from additional route options with the completion of Kernersville Medical Parkway and the Macy Grove and Highway 421 interchange. So there are more routes for traffic to disperse through and less need for Brookford Road. The applicant brought up issues in curiosity about traffic issues on Brookford Road, so we requested the crash data from Kernersville Police Department for Brookford Road and Kernersville Medical Parkway. Since 2021, there have been 35 accidents reported on these roads, so we looked at kind of just the general area surrounding Brookford and Kernersville Medical Parkway. 11 at KMP and Brookford Road, 11 at KMP and NC-66, six at Kernersville Moca Parkway and Veterans Way, three at KMP and Macy Grove Road, and then five were just other intersections, but there may not have been more than one at that same place. Six accidents involved a deer and one involved a fence. So out of that 35, that's kind of how it flows out for the entire area. So we've heard a lot at Planning Board about there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of fast traffic, and that's probably true. But 35 accidents have been reported over the year since 2021. 10 were reported each in 2023 and 2024, but only three have been reported this year so far in this area. The land use plan we just covered, it's low-density residential with a maximum of three units per acre currently. The proposed development is 4.22 units with a proposal to go to medium-density residential, which is a max of seven units per acre. The west fork of the Deep River watershed covers this area, and the site is bisected by the west fork of the Deep River itself. They will be utilizing the high-density stormwater development option to treat the stormwater. The proposed stormwater pond will drain directly to the Deep River, and the applicant has redesigned the site to remove the fill area from the Deep River floodplain. Staff's analysis is that there's a lot of growth happening in the southeast part of Kernersville and Forsyth County, and that has changed the demand for housing. We've got more job centers, more proximity to the interstate, lots of interstate projects. There's just more demand for housing in southeastern Forsyth County all around. A change in population has changed the demand for housing. Then the proposed site plan is sensitive to the floodplain while providing a 30-foot buffer to adjacent residential properties. The number of dwellings proposed with this site plan, which would become the prevailing ordinance for this site, is lower than what could be constructed in the proposed RM5 zoning district without the conditional use site plan. And I think it's important to note that the site currently being zoned RS-20 still allows it for development. So if this rezoning is not approved, the developer could submit a plat tomorrow to divide the lots, divide the land into lots by right and could have about 93 houses, subject to what could be fit with roads and how the layout could go. So voting down a rezoning never stops a property owner from being able to develop their property in some way. Staff recommendation is to approve the rezoning request from RS-20 to RM5C, finding that the petitioner has requested a conditional rezoning, which provides the certainty in the development of the site, given its location between the Interstate 40 right-of-way and lower-density established residential properties, and that the petitioner's submitted site design incorporates watershed protection and will provide a sensitive landscape plan to help improve the natural environment while providing a buffer to the adjacent properties. Staff also recommends approval subject to the conditions as presented in the staff memo. They're the same as what was presented at Planning Board with two exceptions. They were updated to reflect that there shall be no fill in the floodplain and that based on comments that we received at Planning Board and before Planning Board, that all construction-related equipment and vehicles shall utilize the entrance at Brookford Village Drive, and there shall be no construction traffic on Brookdale Forest Drive at any time. That was a concern of some of the neighbors. This was heard at the June Planning Board meeting, but the Planning Board recommended denial of both the rezoning and the site plan as presented by staff. And all members of Planning Board present that night voted in favor of the denial of the rezoning request. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do members of the board have any questions of Ms. Garner at this time? All right, this is a public hearing, and I'll declare the public hearing open. As we get started, I have three persons signed up to speak in favor. Ray Thomas, Chuck Truby, and Scott Wallace. And we will, since you're all related to the development, we'll start the clock at our 20 minutes, and we'll just count down. So if you'd like to regulate your time amongst yourselves. Okay, signed up to speak against, I've got Eric Compton and Rick Hall. Eric, would you like 10 minutes, and Rick, 10 minutes, or do you have coordinated remarks and the time should be divided differently? I can. Do you want me to have us tell you at like five minutes left or something so you don't so we make sure we hear from Mr. Hall? Okay. Does that sound okay, General? All right. And then you've got the clock right there. Sometimes you get going, it's hard to stop and look at the clock. All right, and then is that everybody signed up to speak on this public hearing? All right, we will begin. If you could introduce yourself and give your address, and it can be a business address as you begin. I'll recognize Mr. Wallace.
While Ray's getting ready, can I approach and hand out?
Sure, if you'll give them to Mr. Swisher, he'll hand them to us. I'll recognize Mr. Ray Thomas. And we will start the clock when he starts after he's introduced himself, so.
My name is Raymond D. Thomas, 116C South Cherry Street, Kernersville. In listening to the presentation made earlier, I would just like to say that I moved here in 1966. We were a little, Kernersville was a little smaller then and a little different, but in my opinion, we have done very well. We are a great community, and I am glad that I am a resident, raised a family, and it's grown into something that should be, everybody should be proud of. In regard to the matter before the board, my primary comments will have to do with the extraterritorial jurisdiction. In preparing for this, I learned a lot that I didn't know. First of all, this area is an extraterritorial jurisdiction, and the town is given certain responsibilities and rights to it, particularly as it relates to zoning and an issue of permits. However, it is not in the corporate limits. And the people that live in the ETJ are not residents of the town of Kernersville. They do not pay taxes. They do not vote. And so at this point, I think it's very important for the board to consider whether or not they want this project in town or out of town. There will be issues involving water, traffic, and also the feeling that individuals do not want to change, keep things like they are. But I think the board has to give consideration as to whether or not what is being proposed is suitable, number one. Number two, that it is to be a part of the town. I have submitted to you a map that was shown earlier showing 322.70 acres. It's the one in red. That is the area, part of the area of the ETJ. And so one of the things I think you have to think about is if it is approved, this project, then the project, the maps that you've seen, it would come into the town. The residents in that area would become citizens of the town, having the right to vote and having the obligation to pay tax. If you deny that, then the question may be whether you, whether the town will ever be able to acquire this property into its municipal boundaries. One, in 1973, there was a development that is in the ETJ called Fox Run. Some of you might remember it, and some of you might not, but it was a single-family development outside of the town. It is my opinion that none of those people would petition the town for annexation. The laws over the past few years have changed, and I'm sure you're aware of it, that municipal authorities now have a harder time in annexation, and it generally requires a volunteer annexation from the individual that owns the property. And in this case, it is a condition that to have the zoning change to what is being proposed, that there would be a petition filed. But that is something you'll have to look at, at the entire area that's in the red, and determine whether or not that's what you ought to do or not. But it is my opinion that in looking at this, that the likelihood of anybody else filing a petition for annexation is very little. This is probably one of the larger pieces of property in that particular area. So I think that's something that you have to think about because that's looking into the future. One of the things that I think this is part of a plan, the area where the Kernersville Medical Parkway is located has really opened things up. That used to be nothing but in that area farm, tobacco land. Well, we now have a hospital, we have the VA, there's at least two nursing homes located there. There have been new buildings built, and you just looked at a petition where you rezoned property that is across Interstate 40 from this particular property. So I think the town would have an interest. Obviously, the people that live there now would just assume that you leave everything alone, and I can understand that. But the people involved, the developers, are well-known, they do a good job. They have, they're North Carolina people. They're not from Virginia or anyplace else. They're from right here. But I still think that the issue into the future of changing this piece of property, ETJ, from that to what is being proposed is in the best interest of the town in the long run. In reviewing some of this, I attached a map, the last one, that shows the town limits. And it is amazing to see the areas that your, this board or other boards are going to have to look at as the town continues to grow, areas in the, sort of even in the middle of our community as to being in the town as opposed to being outside of the town. as to being in the town as opposed to being outside of the town. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. Scott Wallace will be going over the site plan and dealing some with traffic and water, which is a big issue, and other things. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'll recognize Scott Wallace. And please start with your name and your address.
I think we had a little technical--
And you can move the -- anything you want to.
We had a little technical difficulties. I think we were going to get a map displayed.
Okay. We'll wait a moment. Curtis is the speaker. Is the microphone on? I don't see the green.
Testing one, two.
Okay.
Testing one, two. I may just hold it.
You can't.
Good evening, Mayor Morgan and Board of Alderman. My name is Scott Wallace. My name is Scott Wallace. I am the co-owner, co-founder, and president of Keystone Group. And we do business as Keystone Homes here in the Triad and only in the Triad. And our office is at 3708 Alliance Drive in Greensboro. We're a local Greensboro-based land developer and home builder that have developed many beautiful communities in the last 29 years. Back in 1996, the company was founded and continues to be solely owned by myself and Mark Michael. Mark grew up in Gibsonville and raised his two daughters there and still lives there today with his wife, Michelle. I grew up in the town of Midway in Northern Davidson County, just south of Winston-Salem. And I've moved to Greensboro 34 years together and lived there with my wife Laura and our three children. We pride ourselves on developing attractive, lushly landscaped, enduring communities while constructing high-quality homes using local tradesmen and suppliers. We have been truly blessed over the years as we have over 80 employees who choose to work with us every day and each and every day. And over the 29 years, we have developed over 50 communities and built over 4,500 homes. Again, we've been truly blessed. I'm here tonight to briefly talk about stormwater, traffic, and the proposed premier luxury empty nester community. Stormwater flooding in the creeks is a concern of our neighbors. And after our planning board meeting, I personally reached out to several of our neighbors to better understand the stormwater. Fortunately, I was able to meet on-site with Mr. Eric Compton, who was nice enough to drive me across the property. He lives down here, and our property's here. So he was able -- nice enough to drive me across his property and some of the neighbors' properties. Trying to get this microphone right. And he pointed out that the most of the stormwater that's concerning to him is from this creek right here that comes underneath Brookford Road and generally is flowing downhill from Highway 66 in the Bishop McGinnis High School area. And the second -- there's another creek that comes down underneath Brookford Road also, and this is coming underneath 40. And these two creeks converge in this low area right here. And with heavy rains, this area floods currently. So that's an existing condition, and it's not related to our community at all. The West Fork Deep River runs here through our property. As you can see, it leaves our property, then it meets up or converges with those two creeks from Brookbake under Brookford Road that caused the flooding over here. And then they connect here and go down. As you can see here on our property, we're in the flood fringe as well. And this area is subject to flooding as well currently with heavy rains. Another major concern was that our site that we -- before we changed it, we were filling slightly in this flood fringe area. And there was a concern that if we filled this area, that it may create flooding in this area and an area to the east. So after meeting Mr. Compton and looking at what's on the ground, I said, "We need to go back to the drawing board. We need to do something different." So as Carolyn Catherine presented, I'm happy to report that we were able to reconfigure the site and that will not require any filling in the flood fringe area. We'll be on our high ground. And we also moved our stormwater retention pond that was here. We moved it up the hill onto much higher ground, and we're not in the flood fringe area either. So I communicated this good news with Mr. Compton, let him know. And then I also met with Mr. Rick Hall and his wife, Selena Allen, at their home at 1810 Volta Drive, which is this property right here at the end of Volta Drive. That, as you can see, the West Fork comes along the rear property line, and they had a concern about flooding. I shared the good news with them that we're not filling in the flood fringe area. And I also pointed out that the stormwater system that we'll be installing will be beneficial if we can get the site plan up, Karen. The site -- the stormwater system that we'll be installing. So with the stormwater system, what it is, is storm pipes, inlets to catch the rain, and send it all to the retention pond. So all this water, over 10 acres now, goes to this West Fork, comes down here, goes by Rick -- Mr. Hall and Mrs. Allen's house, and it goes this way. So with our proposal, we'll be having storm pipes to capture all this water that would go into this West Fork, send it down to our retention pond, and then release it downstream from their property. So generally, all the property of our property now that drains this way will be captured, and it'll completely bypass Mr. Hall and Mrs. Allen's house. So that's another benefit of that. And then also, while we're up here, this shaded area, also this area, 9.93 acres, nearly 10 acres, goes this way down to this area where those two creeks come together. So our stormwater system is once again capturing that water and preventing it from going this way, sending it to our pond, and then releasing it at a pre-development rate down the West Fork. Traffic, as you know, as Catherine pointed out, the good news is Brookford Road currently does not have a lot of trips. And here, at least recently, the trips have not increased because of the two major investments that Kernersville made, the Kernersville Medical Boulevard and the Macy Grove Interchange at Interstate 421. Also, just wanted to elaborate. Catherine already said there will be no traffic here other than first responders. No homeowners, no delivery drivers, no one. And it will only be used if this road is ever stopped for some reason, blocked for some reason. Otherwise, first responders will go this way. This is only in the unlikely event that this road gets blocked.
You have four minutes.
Thank you. Thirdly, we are super excited we're able to develop a property in a unified and comprehensively manner. This community is focused and targeted on lifestyles of the empty nesters. Empty nesters are ready for the low-maintenance living. They've had their years of mowing and maintaining their yards, cleaning and maintaining their large older legacy homes and other large home obligations. The professionally managed and well-capitalized Brookford Village Homeowners Association will maintain the yards, build exterior stormwater systems and common areas, thus leaving time for the Brookford Village homeowners to enjoy their friends, their family, their hobbies, or any of their fun or satisfying hobbies, interests they may have. The exterior of the homes will be mainly brick and stone. They'll have one and two car garages. The roofs will be attractive with architectural shingles. The interior of the homes will flow with elegance, with gourmet kitchens, solid surface counters, modern bath, extensive millwork, plank flooring, ceramic backsplashes, and other luxury features. And because the homeowners are retired or near retirement, they have few vehicle trips each day and generally avoid driving during the morning and evening rush hour periods. Hence, homes -- hence, these few daily trips will not overburden Brookford Road. In fact, our experience, we found in our empty nester communities, many empty nesters have only one shared vehicle. Our commitment to you is to provide an attractive, safe, and first-class premier luxury empty nester community. I'm kind of rushing. Let's catch some breath. That will enhance and complement the surrounding neighborhoods and will complement the whole town of Kernersville. We have a great passion for our work. We invest for the future, and at the end of each day, we're very proud of what we do and who we are. The town of Kernersville has a testament to Kernersville's foresight. Many years ago, when they elected to invest millions of dollars in construction of Kernersville Medical Boulevard, as well as investing millions of dollars in the installation of public sewer and the investment and thoughtful consideration of the ETJ area, we fully expect this to be a successful community. We hope that you'll vote favorably upon this request for rezoning and our voluntary annexation petition to join the town of Kernersville, for us and for our future homeowners. Thank you.
Okay. I'll recognize your next speaker.
Love to answer any questions, Ms. Morgan. Sorry.
I'll recognize your next speaker, Chuck Truby.
You have 1 minute and 23 seconds.
I'm going to try to get through this really quick. Good evening. My name is Chuck Truby. I'm president of CPT Engineering and Surveying, Inc., which I started 25 years ago. I've been a design engineer in the Triad for over 41 years. We recently were the engineering company to design the Knowles at Mill Creek and the mixed-use on Kernersville Medical Parkway recently rezoned here in Kernersville. So we're actually doing the engineering on the property across the interstate. After hearing concern -- and this is probably repeating something, but after hearing concerns from his neighbors, the developer came to us and asked to redesign the project so that there was no filling proposed in the flood fringe. The Kernersville ordinance allows fill in 50% of the area halfway between the floodway and the hundred-year flood elevation. The new plan has no fill in the flood fringe. The wet detention pond has also been moved out of the flood fringe and is five feet above the hundred-year flood elevation. There is no risk of the pond being impacted by flooding of the West Fork of the Deep River. And I'm not aware of any pond failures on any of our projects that I've been doing for 41 years. So we've designed a lot of wet detention ponds. The project has also been designed to take 9.93 acres that currently drains to the south and conveys its runoff through a pipe system to the proposed wet detention pond, which discharges directly into the West Fork of the Deep River. This reduces the runoff that currently drains to the unnamed stream to the south. The wet detention pond will be designed to release runoff to a pre-development level. We calculate what the pre-development runoff rate is based on current land use.
Your time is up.
Maybe I can finish this when -- if we do the rebuttal.
And Mr. Truby, if you could give your address for the clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 4400 Tining Street in High Point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. We are two opponents. Mr. Compton, we'll tell you at 15 minutes.
Eric Compton, 1590 Slate Road. The attorney was talking about he'd been here since 1968 or something like that. Well, I've been here since 1970. I'm 55 years old. I used to go to Dr. Griffin, the dentist, above -- who was above Mr. Pennix's store, and get my teeth cleaned. I got my haircut, my very first haircut, by Roy Marine right beside Snow's Restaurant. And Roy would get me apple pies there while I'd get my hair cut. I used to play in Harmon Park while my mother shopped at Coltrane's produce stand. So I've been here a long time, too, and I understand how the town of Kernersville's changed, and it has changed really nice. But there's some things that have been not by any particular person or board's fault, but there is a lot of problems. And if I could go ahead and get this to play for me, this -- this is the property adjoining the proposed development site. Can you go and get that to -- so it won't play? It played the last time. The last time we were here, it played.
It didn't play in right now.
Anyway, this is -- this is a -- can you just push it again, like you're going to go forward with it?
Here, let's stop the clock, Mr. Morgan. We'll just pause. IT's coming to help.
Okay. Because this is an important -- this is--
Mr. Compton, you got to pause.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for taking this time to do this for me.
Madam Mayor, Adam has requested a 10-minute recess while we do some troubleshooting on the laptop.
Mr. Powell, since we have a technical difficulty with the PowerPoint, is it okay in the middle of a public hearing to do a 10-minute recess? All right. I'll declare a 10-minute recess.
All right, thank you. We have finished our brief recess and reset our technology, and we'll resume the public hearing. Mr. Compton?
Yes.
You may proceed when you're ready and when Catherine has the video rolling for you.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. As you see right here, this is 300 feet across at its shortest distance. Back there where, this is where the proposed, that back corner right there is going to be the proposed area for the retention pond. This is after the water has already started to come down. As you notice, it's not raining. And so this is after, this is at its, when it's receding, not at its worst. So if you go to the next slide, please. When I met Mr. Wallace out there, he thought all this property down here was in the flood plain. And none of this is in the flood plain. Not one piece I'm showing you is in the flood plain. The 100-year flood plain is, is old. It needs to be updated because this has flooded like this three times in the last five years. I say five, it's probably been about eight years now. So you see right here, that's that same house. This is Gary Slate's house. Water is right up and along, right along there. If we continue how we're doing, he's going to have to get flood insurance. I'm going to have to get flood insurance. Some of the people down in this neighborhood is going to have to get flood insurance. If you go to the next slide, please. That's a better picture of how it looks, and you can imagine that water is right there. Next slide, please. This is 44 inches. That sign's 44 inches. You can't see it anywhere. That's how deep that water is right there. 44 inches. That's how deep that water is. In the pond, in the stream, that stream is 14 foot deep. So when the water comes out, it's 14 foot deep in the, in the pond, in the stream, and then 44 inches on top of that. Next slide, please. Now, I want to point out right here, this is where we were just showing you, this water coming across right here. That's what we were just showing you a minute ago when I said it's 300 foot wide, or wide. And over the years, Gary has had to put in three different loads over three different times. The first one, I think, was like 10 tandem loads. The second one was, I think, around 18 or 20 tandem loads. But the last time, after talking to the Corps of Engineers, he built this right here. It's 350 loads and put in two five-foot culverts to try to handle the water. And now you can see, after this was washed out, we had to rebuild it again. So this cost us money. Not to mention the sewer lines that continue to get flood out and then dump sewer all over our property. Now, next slide, please. This is showing back, from Proctor. This is kind of showing how it backs up from Twin Creek Road. It backs up from where Volta Drive, the water up above, like just coming off of Mason Grove Road and coming off of the Medical Center Parkway. It all backs up this way until it fills the creeks up, and then the water has nowhere else to go but over. Next slide, please. So when I was talking to Mr. Wallace, we went and visited one of his sites. And after talking to him, I went around and talked to some of the neighbors. And that's the, if y'all all saw the email I sent you that had the lady's email where she requested her name not to be shared, but she did, you know, y'all know who it is, but she didn't want it in the public forum. But this is from her side saying that this was debris left, trash and problems. And it says right here, this is out of her email, "The contractors dumped their waste, construction and personal on my lawn and insulation singles, bricks, plastic, house wrap, plant containers, et cetera. There remains a large spool of cable wiring. I dealt with Keystone employees trespassing on my property many times. There is, you know, only one entrance. They were looking for another entrance. But again, current residents have also used my landfill dumping." So even though, you know, he proposes it's not going to cause a problem, this is testimony from somebody who is saying it was a problem. Next slide, please. And this is the, again, her property is located right there beside the development. And she talks about her pond having problems from the Freeburg Village. That she contacted several of the Davidson County Agriculture Extensions and they were cited and such like that. But this is, this is pictures that she had where it caused problems, caused this area to flood, which caused the trees to die. Next slide, please. So this doesn't only affect me and my family's land, but this is also on Brookford Road on another part of the property where, and this is supposed to be a video too, that shows this is all water right here that's flooded. It caused us thousands of dollars worth of damage to Mr. Carpenter's property. There's a lady here who lives behind us who sent me some videos too. But there's so many videos showing the same thing, I just didn't put it in. But there's a lot of these problems that if we continue to allow this, it's going to cause damage to the surrounding property. You know, there's just more and more damage every year. And next slide, please. So this is Brookford Road. And this is when the, when the water comes across, it damages the road and damages the culverts. This is supposed to be a video. If you could play it, I would appreciate it. Thank you. So from that culvert right there down is 18 foot. And you see how much water is going across there. So this runs over into our property once it all backs up from Brookford Road, and it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse. Next slide, please. This shows how, I took this picture today. That shows how deep it is on this side. Next slide, please. This is the culvert where the Department of Transportation has worked on it one time. It started flooding around it, so they put in this temporary rock to try to slow it down. But it's not going to be long before this fails again. Next slide, please. This is Brookford Road and Bucker Hill Sander Ridge Road. And I took this picture to show you from white line to the yellow line is 108 inches, which is, I think, nine feet. And next slide, please. This is Brookford Road, and I measured this right here. So from the yellow line to the white line is seven foot four inches. Not even eight foot. That's the, that's eight foot is the minimum standard for a road. After talking to the Department of Transportation several times about this, and I've already shared this with y'all in the last board, several times I've talked about this. These roads, when they, when the state adopted them or took them over from the residents, they didn't do any improvement. They just, they agreed to maintain it at its current level. So in order for them to do any upgrade, they have to buy the land, the right of way, from everybody on Brookford Road. That's why the Department of Transportation has said in numerous times that they're not going to do that. They don't have the money to do that. While I'm talking about this, you mentioned that the traffic was going to be, right now, there's roughly 35 traffic accidents. Well, that's only being reported by the Kernersville Police Department. Well, that's only being reported by the Kernersville Police Department. In this area on Brookford Road, the State Highway Patrol handles all wrecks. I know because we've had our mirrors slapped on several occasions, and you have to call the, the Highway Patrol comes out. So anything on Brookford Road is not being reported in your statistics. But even at that statistic, you're talking about four times the amount of traffic you're proposing just from this one development, not including the apartment complex that's going on. So you're going to add 140 additional traffic accidents by y'all's numbers just in that, if we approve this. Next slide, please. And these are videos right here too, so if you could play them. I took this today. I want you to notice, every one of these vehicles that come by here go across that yellow line because it's only seven and a half foot wide. Next slide, please. Doesn't matter if you're going, which direction you're going in, right there, across the yellow line. Next slide, please. I don't, I have no idea who these people are, I just stopped at Gary's mailbox and took pictures. Across the yellow line. Keep going to that next one right here, I think this is a good one to show too. So this is a commercial vehicle. Look how, it's, it's eight foot wide and it takes up the entire, from lane to lane and over into the, the yellow, the yellow line again. Same thing, you know, this is just, again, random people across the yellow line. And these, every, every one of these vehicles are driving slow. None of these are driving fast. Most people burn up and down this road because they're trying to cut through. Next slide, please. So, and if you can get this to play for me. So again, I want to show you this again as I'm, as I'm closing, because I want you to see that the retention pond that he's saying is he's going to be able to build will be butted up against this, and this is only one section of it. The big section that comes down between the, the property and the property on Volta Drive is worse than this, is deeper than this, is faster than this. So the retention pond is going to fail. And I know he says he's built it for 45 years, well, I've been in the, in the business for 35 years on repairing them. And I, I repair these all the time, and this, this happens. And everybody that I've talked to, they've never had this amount of water flowing against a retention pond. None of them. I mean, again, this is 300 foot wide at its shortest point. Over here from where the dam is to the pond, there's a pond on the Slate Farm, and where the dam is, from that dam across to the next section where the retention pond would be is like 500 foot away. And it is that, that deep and that wide and flowing that fast. And again, we have to, we have to, we've seen the damage that the Corps of Engineers said would fix this, and it didn't. So if the Corps of Engineers was overwhelmed by it, you know, the engineer who's designing this retention pond, you know, he, he might be right, but, but more than likely he's wrong, in my opinion. And we're, we're the ones that's going to have to, to deal with it. And I'll say in that, that email I sent you from the lady next to Freeburg Village, she stated that they've had numerous problems with the homeowners association, numerous problems. And that's what I've said several times. And when I met Mr. Wallace when we were riding around down there, he said, you know, they had, they had just come off of the board a couple of years ago, and now the, the homeowners have taken it all over. And so by that reason, they were having problems even before he left the board. And I don't know, he'd have to speak to that. I, I don't know about that, I can't speak to, I'm just going by what she said. But I'm, I'm showing you all this precursors to problems. Problems that we already inherited, like I was saying before we were interrupted, was that it's not anybody's fault, it's just development and the boards, and the planning boards had no idea this was going to happen. You know, we always anticipate and look for the revenue generating things like the sewer, the water, the property. But we never think about when we, all of this water is coming from Highway 66, every bit of Highway 66, both interstates, 40, bypass 40 and Old 40. All of Mason Grove Road, all of that is coming into this area right here. That's not Mr. Wallace's fault, but it's not my fault either. And we're the ones having to repair the damage constantly. We're going to add something that's going to cause even more problems. And he, he mentions like that nine or 10 acres of the water that's running from that, from that property onto ours. Not one bit, not one of these pictures I can show you, and I have a lot more pictures, not one part of that water comes from that nine acres. We have no problem with that nine acres. There's actually a natural drainage ditch that collects it probably and runs it on further down. So that's not going to help us at all. But my concerns are the problems that the neighbor cited, that with the, the trespassing and the trash and the damage that she had, that I know we're going to experience as well. I thank you for your time in this, and, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything, but are you, I give you about five minutes now to-
Okay, I'll recognize Rick Hall.
Okay. You good?
Yeah.
I'd like to hand this out to three guys to look at.
Mr. Hall, just so you know, you have five minutes and 54 seconds.
All right, thank you. Okay. Rick? Yeah, Rick Hall, 1810 Volta Road. What you have here is a, some pictures I took on June 26th, like Eric was saying, just a normal, normal day and a normal steady rain shower. So when you flip over into this, you can kind of see, and this is our property. In fact, I don't have the map up there, but this is kind of in that corner from where the property runs back up against the retention pond back there on the corner, corner of ours. I don't know if she can pull the map back up? Oh, sorry.
Could you adjust the microphone so you could speak into it?
Oh, sure.
We, for two reasons. One, people are, in this room are having trouble hearing you, and then the other is we're recording it on YouTube, and so the viewers-
Okay.
-wouldn't hear you at all without the microphone.
Is this better?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So, yeah, so here we go. Yep.
Can you point to us where Volta Road is on that-
So this is our, this is our property right here. Here's Volta right here. And this is where a lot of the water is coming from right here. So what these pictures are, you'll see, is kind of right in here, with the water coming this way, building up, and the water coming, you know, this way, building up. So we're kind of that, that point where it all collects back in here. So right in, right in here is a big, big piece of it. And that's where you see that one picture is kind of right in here. So the second picture that you, that you see on there is kind of in the back part of the property, you know, back over, back over in here, where that, that water's running from that standpoint. And again, this is just a normal day of rain, not anything extraordinary that, that happens. And then the next one that you see is kind of the water coming down that other side of that. So it all collects back in, back in here. That, that picture is up, the next one is right in here. So it's all collectively, you know, right in here with all, all the water that's running off from here and there. So my, my concern is, when the water and the retention pond runs, where does all that water going to end up? It'll probably backfill, back from here, when it dumps it out down in here somewhere, it's probably going to backfill backwards, I would, I would think. And I'm by no means an engineer from, from that standpoint. But that's a, that's one of my concerns with, with that. Because we see that, this was just an example of the 26th of June. We see this all the time with, with the water and the scenario. And what's most interesting, and Eric mentioned it, is we start to get a lot of emails and a lot of mail with flood insurance. So it's really interesting, we get these all the time, wanting us to enroll, you know, on different, different flood insurance, you know, programs, which I think is very, very interesting. And another, another piece of that is the water, you know, when he's talking about, Scott's talking about the piping that goes here, water's going to go where water's going to go, you know, from that standpoint. Is those pipes that's going to be right here going to be able to handle the runoff from here and here and end up right here? You know, what is the amount of water that this is going to collect over here with runoff on this property, what it's doing today versus what it would do with hard surface runoff? Quite a bit of difference there when you have soft, soft surface runoff versus hard surface runoff. You're going to have a lot more water coming down through there. And it's going to go somewhere, and this is where a lot of it ends up, you know, right in, right in the back of our property. And it's actually come up a lot of times, you know, our house is kind of right in here, kind of almost in the middle, it's come way up in the, up in our yard a lot of times. And, you know, from that, on those normal, normal cycles of, of rain. But that's pretty much, you know, what I, what I had to present with you. And it's a, you know, basically the same thing we've kind of said over and over, you know, with that, what happens to all the water? What happens to all the runoff? You know, with that, with the, with the flood zones and everything that happens there? Eric, do you have anything?
So that video I showed you with the Yakon River, it's running, running right here, and it comes up to that corner. The other creek comes down through here. So these all intersect right here. And this is where the retention pond's going to go. And this is what I was showing about, you know, if somebody, imagine trying to have a pipe that's going to discharge water from the retention pond in and submerged into the Yakon River. I mean, that's exactly what that is. That, you know, you see the damage it causes on our property. It tears our fences down. You know, I've shown you all this, the previous boards and different things several times, and some of y'all who've been up to the property have seen it. But this is where I'm talking about, that water comes right down through here to that corner, the water comes down here to this corner, and it backs up from this area. So that retention pond is going to have to withstand, again, the Yakon River, and I just don't think it will. So thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? If you can speak very quickly, there's 43 seconds left. All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the rebuttal, rebuttal, and it is a maximum of five minutes.
All right, I just want to stress again that, yes, we had the pond in that corner before we went back and redesigned the plan, and we've moved that pond way to the west, and we've elevated the pond. So his concern was, is, was, is real where we had it located before, because the backside of the dam would have been affected by those floodwaters. But now that pond is up above those 100, under 100-year flood elevation. So there's no concern, unless the 100-year elevation increases, there's really no concern about the backside of the dam washing out. I sympathize with the neighbors, we can't control the current flood issue. I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. All we can do is design a project that does not add to the flooding issues, which we have done by not filling in the flood fringe and designing a wet detention pond that will retain the runoff to a pre-development levels. And this is just kind of a, an FYI. The, our site is basically, our developed site is roughly 32 acres. The drainage basin on the east side of Twin Creek Road is 200, 2,285 acres. That's how much of a drainage basin is flowing just to the east of Twin Creek Road. We are roughly 1.4% of that drainage. So if you think about it, we're retaining our runoff, we're not adding, we're not, you know, we're a drop in the bucket to what is actually entering that stream. And the other thing is, and I, I have to say this, is that the property is currently zoned RS20, okay? The developer could go in there and develop this property with 20,000 square foot lots, which would actually be what's called a low-density development. So if you're less than two lots an acre, you don't have to put in a wet detention pond for that. You could let the drainage flow directly into the stream. And, and we'd also, he'd be allowed to fill in the floodplain if he wanted to, per the Kernersville Development Ordinance. So essentially, if it was developed without being rezoned, it could make the flooding problems worse than what we're proposing now.
Catherine, if we can get that storm map pulled back out pretty please.
Okay, I'll recognize Mr. Wallace.
Mr. Wallace, you have about two minutes and 35 seconds, because you got 2:30, it's 2:29 up there, but you got 2:35, okay?
And I, it was, all right. So first of all, I, we're very proud of our Freeburg Village community. We have hundreds of satisfied and happy homeowners, unsure of the details of solicitation of this one, one email, completely unaware of what was contained in that. So just, we have a lot of happy homeowners there, so we're really proud of that community. Just want to talk, really also sympathize with the water problems that are existing there today and currently there, and is no result of our community. Just wanted to point out a few things. The photo that was showed earlier with over, the water coming over Brookford Road is down here, far away from our property and not as a result of our property. The flooding, the flooding or the wide area of water, once again, is in this low area creek, and this low creek coming around here, some of it's on our property. But we've moved our retention pond up here on high ground in an effort to have a win-win for everyone. There was made mention of Mr. Slate's yard, and there's detailed photos of that. I just want to point out, that's, that's, Mr. Slate lives right here. This is a result of these two tributaries down here that are downstream of our property. The white, the, the area where they had to add the riprap, it's going, it's on this side of this, this creek area, and it's going up this hill over here. So there was really no photos of this area of our property, other than in the distance looking right here where this creek goes. So we understand there's water problems, but it's not a result of our community. And then Mr. Hall's concerns, he was talking about the water here, this dashed area, that is the flood zone. It gets a lot of water. This outer area is the flood fringe, and that's what we're not going to be impacting. So yes, there is a lot of water there already and will continue, because that's where the creek is. So I am very sensitive to the issues that are out there existing, but as Mr. Truby suggested in the way he's engineered it, and he's got a lot of experience engineering, he engineered the project off Old Winston Road, and he's, he's an expert at this, he's the best in town. But we're, we moved everything uphill, we're not going to contribute to the water problem that's already there. We're, we're trying to do our best to be responsible and not make it any worse. Love to answer any questions you may have.
That is the end of the rebuttal, and now there's the counter rebuttal by the opponents.
We've made no claim that he's made this water problem. The reason why I wanted to show the water going across Brookford Road is that is the road that's going to put the additional traffic on that is in such a bad disrepair, that there's always problems on Brookford Road. That's why I shared with y'all that Highway Patrol answers wrecks there, not KPD. The next thing is, this is the actual flood area, this is the 100-year floodplain. What I'm showing you is, this floodplain right here is, is flooded constantly. So this 100-year floodplain and the flood fringe is not accurate anymore. After all the development that's happened in Kernersville and just different things, this has all changed. All that has changed completely. So we have water coming up here constantly, and, and it's flooding this area. So my whole point is, if you, the retention pond he's talking about building is right here, it's actually not on this corner, it's like right here. And, because it's directly across from the Slate Pond. So you can look on the dam of the pond and look straight across where it's going to be. But, we're, we moved everything uphill, we're not gonna contribute to the water problem that's already there. We're, we're trying to do our best to be responsible and not make it any worse. Love to answer any questions you may have.
That is the end of the rebuttal, and now there's the counter rebuttal by the opponents.
We've made no claim that he's made this water problem. The reason why I wanted to show the water going across Brookford Road is that is the road that's gonna put the additional traffic on, that is such a bad disrepair, that there's always problems on Brookford Road. That's why I shared with y'all that Highway Patrol enters wrecks there, not KPD. The next thing is, this is the actual flood area, this is the 100-year floodplain. What I'm showing you is, this floodplain right here is flooded constantly. So this 100-year floodplain and the flood fringe is not accurate anymore. After all the development that's happened in Kernersville and just different things, this has all changed. All that has changed completely. So we have water coming up here constantly, and, and it's flooding this area. So my whole point is, if you, the retention pond he's talking about building is right here, it's actually not on this corner, it's like right here. And, 'cause it's directly across from the Slate Pond, so you can look on the dam and the pond and look straight across where it's gonna be. When I met Mr. Wallace out there, he had never been to that site. He asked me if I would bush hog, and I, and I tried to, I just hadn't had time. But, but if the people who remember coming out, the last board members came out and met me out there, we had it bush hogged, and you could see where that ran. All the videos and all the pictures you've seen, all of this area that is a 100-year floodplain, my area up here is not in the floodplain at all, and that's where I'm showing you, it's flooding. So if we're getting that much water up here, that area right there is way over what anybody can imagine. I don't know if the engineer's been out there and actually seen the property, but Mr. Wallace said to me when he was out there, on paper, looks one way, visiting it looks a whole another, and that's a fact. And so, I've never claimed that, that they are causing the water problems. What I'm claiming is, they're designed for that retention pond with that amount of water, and, and him thinking that's just a 100-year floodplain, it's not, it floods constantly. So that's, that, that needs to be adjusted. The traffic I showed you, okay, that was today at, I can show you the videos, it was like within a 20-minute period, every vehicle that came down that road crossed the yellow line. It's only seven and a half foot from, from yellow line to white line. Okay? We're gonna dump that much more traffic on there, after having, after the approval of the apartment complex is gonna add even more. So, those are the things that I just wanna point out, that, that, you know, again, he's right, my property is up here. And if I'm experiencing flooding that bad, that I'm gonna have to start looking at a house damage, and Gary's gonna have damage, what makes you think they're not gonna have damage up here in that retention pond? Not to mention, again, when the area floods, it's, it's a lot of septic issues. I'm, I'm assuming there are septic lines you're gonna run through that property and connect to the sewer lines, which is gonna be that many more manholes and openings and different things to cause that much more contamination on top of the soil. So just a lot of things to think of, and, and I appreciate y'all's time, and I know this has been exhausting, this has been probably, you know, a lot of, a lot of issues for y'all, but I just appreciate y'all listening to us and thinking about us, and taking this into consideration.
Okay. Mr. Hall, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, again, I just wanna thank you guys for listening to us. I think this is what, our third year of going around with this, this right here. And again, you know, my concern is, you know, what we talked about is the water. And Scott said, you know, the, the original conversation that we had, the piping that we're gonna have back over here was gonna capture this water, and he was just saying, well, that water's already there, it's already, it's gonna stay there. So what does that look like from that standpoint? How much water is this gonna capture in addition to what's already there? And what happens if that retention pond can't hold, you know, a major storm or something like that? When it breaches, it's gonna hit us right there. So, very concerned with, with some of that, the uncertainties of what that looks like in today's world, where there's nothing going on right there, we see it, but in the future, what, what is the outcome of something that does go wrong, and the impact it's gonna have with us in adjacent landowners, that we have no control over, or something that's gonna be placed there? And that's one of my big concerns, is that, that process there. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. So we've had the proponents, we've had the opponents, we've had the rebuttal, we've had the counter rebuttal, so I will now declare the public hearing closed. So we have two issues. The Kernersville Development Plan, which would be the first discussion and vote, and then the rezoning, which would be the second discussion and vote. We can discuss them combined, but we do need to do two separate votes, and the first vote will be Item A, Kernersville Development Plan, zoning docket KDP 76, and the second vote, the rezoning, zoning docket K 791A1. Does anyone have questions of Ms. Garner or anyone else in the room? Or is there any discussion or emotion? Okay, Mr. Barrow?
I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Compton. Listening to what you're saying-
And Mr. Compton, if you come up and speak into the microphone, and limit what you say to a response to Mr. Barrow's question, please.
After listening to your presentation and showing us what was going on down there, it appears to me that all the development we've done on the other side of the highway and all through Kernersville has greatly affected your side of the road over there. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
And all this water, you said the 100-year plan, that's, that's a every-year plan, right?
Correct.
And then the road, of course, is, is substandard to carry the load. Is that what I hear you saying?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much for your, your good work on this, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Eric, if you don't mind remaining, Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions, if I may. Eric, I'm gonna challenge you a little bit, and I'm gonna do that in order to learn.
Yes, sir.
Don't take that as how I, what my position is on this-
Correct.
You made some comments about the 100-year floodplain, and what it, that it was inadequate, that it needed to be updated and so forth. You've prefaced, though, you and Mr. Hall both, I think, have quite appropriately prefaced the other comments by saying, you know, we're not an engineer, we're not engineers, we're not either. So we really are not in a position to answer Mr. Hall's questions that are thrown out there about this. What happens if, what happens if? You'd have to tell us that, or you'd have to have an expert tell us that, for us to know.
Correct.
Because I'm no more of an engineer, probably less of an engineer than you are, I'm sure. But, what we're considering today, tonight, is the impact of this specific project on the flooding that's taking place. We can say that the speed limit on Salem Parkway ought to be 80. It's not. Who is responsible for updating the floodplain figures or the, or the location of the floodplain? Do you know?
Well, I would say it'd be FEMA.
Okay. Do you know if there's any process underway to address that issue with FEMA?
I don't think so. When I looked it up on the website to get where all that water was draining from, and there's, there's all information on, on the internet. Basically, no, I don't remember the exact date, but the floodplain was updated like in 1950-something.
Okay, that helps me.
So there's a ton of, things have changed since 1950. But I will say, I've, I've lived there for 55 years, I've worked that land all my life. It, we never had flooding like this. So, for it to happen in this short a time, shows me, observation, that the 100-year floodplain is no longer correct.
Okay.
And, I will speak to one more thing, again, in my business, in, in, that we have, we follow repair from engineers all the time, and, to repair and fix storm problems and runoff and all that kind of stuff. So, I can't, I'm not an engineer, but I can, I can speak that I've repaired these under their guidelines a lot. So that's where I'm at on this.
It's been up to you to clean up the mess.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Exactly, do you have any figures as to how much more water would result from the construction of these homes in this particular application?
No, sir.
How, how can you quantify that for us and give us a visual?
I, I, I don't, I'm, I agree with, I think he said there was like, very small percentage is going to increase onto there. My concern and my problem is, is that I know from experience, just like I said, I've been, you know, 55 years and the, from observing the, the flood that's happened in the 100-year floodplain, from 35 years in business of repairing these, nobody I've ever repaired has had this kind of water pressure, hydraulic water pressure going against it, against the piping and everything on the discharge side, and, and they're gonna clear off land around it. So all the natural buffer, that everything that would be there to slow it down is gonna be gone. So it's gonna make the flow, what I'm, that videos I showed, is gonna make it faster, more prominent to cause more problems. So, that's what I'm saying, I don't think there, the water that comes off that property, it might add a percentage, but my concern is, no matter where they build that retention pond, on that lower side of the floodplain area, it floods, it floods all the time. So to think that you're gonna have a discharge pipe, you know, that pond is like this, it's got a discharge pipe. As that water comes by the discharge pipe, it's gonna be underwater, with extreme amount of pressure on it, backflowing back up, causing problems, eroding, just a lot of problems with it. So, I know it's gonna fail, which is gonna then, you know, me and my family's gonna have to do the repairs to it, you know, on my side, 'cause we, we already have to clean it from the sewer and, you know, the, the, what's the saying, we're supposed to mow and maintain that area, they never do, the, the fences are down, all that kind of stuff. So I know it's gonna come back to us to have to repair-
Okay.
...and clean up the mess, and that's where my concerns are. Not, not to mention, again, the, the road and the traffic, that's why I showed that Brookford Road, how inadequate it is for it to handle the water, the traffic, it's just, it's just bad, you know?
Well, and, and I think maybe the, if I'm understanding you correctly, let me see if I am. The road problems, the narrow width of the road and of each lane on it, are not problems that Keystone or you created.
No, sir, no.
The water flow that's existing now are not problems that either Keystone or you have created.
No, sir.
But it's your position that the addition of the traffic on the roads, the addition of the water-
Right.
...flow as a result of the discharge from the Keystone Project would exacerbate the problem, would make it worse?
Yes, sir. The traffic and the additional part, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, the staff?
I have one concern. It appears from everything that I've heard here tonight, that nobody on either side of the aisle here is responsible for the, the problem. And, it appears that, if that is, the issue that seems to be concerning everybody is the flow of water coming on people's property. And, what I'm dealing with in my head is, if the developer is not responsible for it, should he be held accountable for that and not being able to be given the opportunity to develop this property, because it's not his fault? And then, I'm talking with the other side of the question, you know? It's not your fault that it's there either, but the problem exists. And so do we penalize someone for a problem that they didn't cause, when they're trying to provide a service to the community for people in our community? That's what I'm struggling with in my head, and I want you all to understand how difficult this is for us up here, to try to make the decision when nobody has that fault. And then we're trying to make a decision that's what's best for the community of Kernersville. I just want y'all to understand that, you know, it's a tough deal for us up here.
Is that a question or-
Excuse me, Mr. Gorham is discussing his point of view at the moment, and the public hearing is closed, so-
I'm just, I'm just-
It is a rhetorical question, which he's permitted to do.
Trying to talk it through, you know, as we go through this process, that we're having to try to solve here tonight, and, so we could just have some point of reference, you know, because that's the biggest thing that I'm having to deal with. It's nobody's fault, but there's a problem, you know? And, so, that was my only comment that I wanted to make in regards to this.
Okay, any other comments?
Madam Mayor, one more comment. The, the road problem, the deficiencies in the road that exist, whatever they may be, I, I think it's important to understand that that's not a, a point of the town ignoring or failing to address that problem. It is a state road. It's not only their responsibility, but they have the only authority to do anything about it. If there needed to be additional right-of-way acquired, the state and DOT would have to do it. I feel like that we are probably impacted by the diversion of some of the funds, just as we're seeing over on the other side of town, to western North Carolina as a result of helene damage and highways that are having to be dealt with, state money that's having to go into recovery up there. That too is nobody's fault, but it's a situation that we're having to deal with. So, I, I hope we understand that there's, there really is no bad actor here. If, if we decide to go one direction, that does not mean that Keystone has a bad project. In fact, I think there's evidence on the contrary, that when they do a project, it's well-done. I think there's evidence, as we've heard now and before, that this is gonna sort of be an upscale version of some of the things they've done before, with hard countertops, with, you know, that kind of thing. So, it doesn't mean that it's a bad project. It doesn't mean, though, that the residents around that, from the other side, don't have very real problems, and I don't think any of us would like to live in an area adjacent to the videos that you've shown, Eric. And thank you both for good, I think, objective presentations, you've made your arguments very well. There's been hard work and hard preparation done, and both sides have been very well-represented. So I just would like to thank you for giving us the information that I think we need to make that hard decision that General Gorham spoke about. So thank you. That having been said, Madam Mayor, are you ready for a motion? Okay. I'd like to move that we deny the resolution to change the designation of the property on the south side of I-40 and the east side of Brookford Road. A portion of Pen 6895-02-2002 from low-density residential to mixed residential, because it would insert higher density on the edge of the town limits, adjacent to a more rural, unincorporated area, and that has to do with KDP 76.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Apple, second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, all in Wait a minute, raise your hands again? All, all in favor of your motion, and your motion was a motion to deny?
That's correct.
All right, it's unanimous. So, does this mean we still vote on the rezoning? Because you can't do the rezoning if you haven't changed the development plan, right?
Yes, ma'am, you do need a, a vote on both, please.
All right. Now, do I have a motion on the rezoning case, K 791A1, which was Item B on the agenda?
I'd make a motion to deny that also, Madam Mayor.
Would you like to explain your denial motion more fully?
I'd make a motion to not amend the zoning ordinance of the town by denying the rezoning request for the property in case K-791, period, A1. Said rezoning being inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan, and further being both unreasonable and not in the public interest, because the request to rezone from RM 5-C zoning district is inconsistent with the LUP. Number two, the density of the surrounding area is significantly lower than proposed with this rezoning request, and the location in the middle of the corridor puts density away from the higher-intensity areas within town limits compared with the lower-density unincorporated area. That's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Barrow, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Pennix, all in favor. It's unanimous. Okay, is there anything further we need to do on this agenda item? All right, we will move on then to our next agenda item, which is public session, starting with speakers from the floor. And I do not have any cards for anyone signed up for speakers from the floor. Sorry, procedurally, we're- Sorry, procedurally, we're... Mr. Hooker, do you have any cards for speakers from the floor?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then the next item will be item 2B, presentation by the Sierra Club.
Gentlemen, submit a card to speak.
I have Paul Kelly, are you Paul Kelly?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if you want to speak on the Transco pipeline risks, I think that would be properly on the agenda with the Sierra Club presentation, rather than speakers from the floor, because our speakers from the floor rule is speakers from the floor on an issue not otherwise on the agenda. So I'm sorry if you didn't hear me, it's easy enough with the movement in the room. So, I'll recognize the Sierra Club. This is item B, presentation by the Sierra Club regarding the Southeast Supply Enhancement Project. And I know you sent us an email, but if you could go ahead and restate your name and your address, because the clerks require it too for the records, and it can be a business address.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Alderman, for hearing our presentation tonight.
Yeah, I'm Shelley Robbins, and also, this is, actually, we're two different organizations, not Sierra, Sierra set this up, but I'm Shelley Robbins, and I'm with the Southern Alliance for Clean Energy, and I'm from Thomasville, but I live in Durham, so 423 One American Drive in Durham.
And I am Jessica Mendez-Roe, I work with Piedmont Environmental Alliance, we are both part of a coalition, along with Sierra Club and several other organizations opposed to this pipeline. I have been helping raise awareness among community members about this proposed pipeline. We have had numerous conversations... Sorry. Maybe I should hold it. With community members who do not really understand the scope or impact of this project. So we're here today to share with the board what we've been telling them. It is our belief that this proposed pipeline will in fact not bring any benefit to our local economy and only risk health and safety. So if I could go to the next slide.
If I could pause you right there, if you could put the sign down, that's not appropriate in the rules of our proceedings, thank you, go ahead.
The Transcontinental Gas Pipeline Company, or Transco, is owned by the Williams Companies, a gas giant responsible for transporting about one-third of the gas in the United States across about 33 miles of pipeline. Within the Southeast Supply Enhancement Project that we are here to discuss today, Transco seeks to build a 42-inch diameter pipeline that would transport methane gas at a very high pressure, typically this is about 14-40 PSI, through our county. About 93% of that gas would go to three large companies and be used for commercial power generation. You can go to the next slide. This coming November, the Federal Energy Regulation Commission is planning to issue a 30-day comment period on a draft environmental assessment, which will be scheduled to end on December 7th. Shortly after that, the Federal Energy Regulation Commission will either issue or deny Transco's certificate to authorize eminent domain. You'll see on this slide that the FERC is a five-member commission at the national level, they oversee the regulation and permitting for interstate methane gas pipelines. There are several outstanding permits and easements not issued at this time. We are currently in a public comment period with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for a crucial 401 water quality permit for this project to move forward. There was actually a public hearing held here in Kernersville on September 4th, where 22 people spoke against the project, I believe two people spoke in favor of the project. The comment period for that will close on October 6th. Air quality permits will be next, though the public comment period has not opened yet. So essentially, we are on the precipice of action with the Department of Environmental Quality and with FERC, and this is why we believe eminent action from this board is really crucial. We are hoping that the board will pass a resolution against this pipeline, so that the agencies here can consider and incorporate your comments and your concerns into their decision.
Next slide. All right. So, why should you be concerned? This is a Google Earth view of the VA clinic and Novant Kernersville Medical Center. The VA clinic is in the middle, and the red arrow points to the existing Transco right-of-way and where construction would take place. The clinic is 1,400 feet from the right-of-way. And we're concerned about how close these major medical centers are to the right-of-way, and I have a personal interest in the VA clinic, I'm power of attorney for my Vietnam veteran uncle, and that is where, that is where he gets his, that's his healthcare facility. And then, of course, the area in Kernersville off of I-40 near the right-of-way is slated for a lot of residential and commercial development per the comprehensive plan. Now, there are currently three large diameter, high-pressure pipelines in that right-of-way, and each one is only 25 feet from the other one, whereas the Interstate Natural Gas Association of America recommends, and this is the Interstate Natural Gas Association of America recommends 50 feet between pipelines in order to ensure construction safety. And this is what, this area is what's called a high-consequence area. An accident with ignition would cause loss of life and property. There's a formula for calculating the blast zone, and that, for this area and this diameter and pressure, that's 1,115 feet. That formula only applies to one pipeline, there's no formula for multiple pipelines in the same right-of-way, much less for what I'm gonna show you on the next slide. All right, so this is a pipeline alignment sheet that Transco prepared for FERC, and they have provided, they have to provide alignment sheets for the entire project, but this one caught my attention. This shows the proposed new pipeline, the red line, crossing the existing three old pipelines, very close to the VA clinic. So the VA clinic is gonna be just out of the picture in the bottom left-hand corner, is where that property is. All right. So, that, so we can, we can also see from this picture, you can see that red line, that the construction of the new pipeline also will be on the VA clinic's side of the right-of-way. So that's already a concern, but now we see that Transco is proposing that the new pipeline cross the old ones in a high-consequence area, and with only 25 feet between the pipelines. We don't know how this construction would be handled, and it introduces, and I've been in pipelines for, since 2016, it introduces an unusually high amount of risk for such a sensitive area with not one but two healthcare centers. There is no formula to tell us what the blast zone would be for a pipeline that crosses underneath three large diameter, high-pressure pipelines. Now, I will also add that this particular project, the Salem Loop, is 24 miles long. 20 of the 24 miles are high-consequence areas, that means they, they're all, 20 miles of 24 are gonna have a terrible impact if anything happens with ignition. So they're trying to cram a pipeline in where there really isn't room. Next.
There are a few other local institutions that we believe should be considered as well. The pink line here shows you the right-of-way for existing, existing right-of-way, and then you might not be able to see it so well, but there are stars showing Caleb's Creek Elementary, Southeast Middle on the left side of the screen, and then the PTRC, or the Piedmont Triad Regional Council's offices on the right side of the screen. There are actually a total of four public schools and one charter school, and as, as well as several private institutions that are near the right-of-way for this project. Other important institutions include Fire Station 42 in Kernersville, we've actually hosted several community meetings there to help educate community members, and then, as I just said, the PTRC office. Additionally, this project, this pipeline project would cross several major roadways, including 421, Highway 66, Interstate 40, and Interstate 74, which puts many homes and important areas of Kernersville in the high-consequence area that Shelley just went over. Forsyth County already has about 70 miles of methane gas pipelines, and some of this pipe is more than 50 years old and continues to age in place. Transco isn't proposing to replace or take out any of the pipe, that old pipe with this project. Next slide, please. So, what kind of safety risks are there? This is, again, methane gas, or as industry calls it, natural gas. When accounting for leaks, methane gas has climate impacts that do rival those of coal. We do not actually need this gas in our, and it actually won't be used in our community, we will be kind of a pass-through community. The Pipeline Safety Trust points out in comments to the FERC that of all the gas pipeline operators in the United States that have recorded incidents in the past, Transco actually holds one of the worst records, not only in the number of incidents, but also in the terms of fatalities, cost per incident, and gas bills per incident. We know that residents are concerned about safety and public health risks, and that those have not been adequately addressed by Transco, or in the FERC document, or DEQ documentation. Some of the questions we are hearing is how does co-location affect the potential impact radius or the blast zone? If there is a pipeline failure, how will this affect surrounding community members, and who will be responsible for covering the cost of repair and emergency services? And how would a failure of pipeline impact Kernersville Crisis Response Services? None of these are, have currently been addressed by the Transco company. Next slide.
All right. Now, so this, this is a map of the Transco system on the east coast, very simplified, from its production wells up in Marcellus Utica, up in the northeast, the shale gas, going all the way down to their Gulf Coast operations, which includes supplying LNG export. So it's important to remember that both Williams, Transco, and Duke Energy, which is, has contracted for two-thirds of the capacity on this pipeline, and remember, it's, it's capacity, it's like a highway, it's not the cars themselves. So it's, this is about capacity, to, to move the cars, which is the gas. But Transco and Duke make their money by building big things, and then earning rate of return on it, and that rate of return is paid by us, the ratepayers. That is, that is the regulatory model. And Duke Energy has signed a contract which is confidential for two-thirds for 1.5 billion, a $1.5 billion project. Now with tariffs on steel and pipeline labor shortages, it's actually gonna cost a lot more. This cost is passed directly onto ratepayers. Duke has no skin in the game and no motivation to negotiate on our behalf. Now, you might ask about, what about Piedmont Natural Gas? You know, they're responsible probably for a lot of local economic development, they are actually not signed up for any of the capacity on this project. So, you know, none of it helps them or any economic development. So that would be the gas that reaches you locally, would be through P&amp;G. So if Williams at some point comes to address this group, and they say, they are, we are investing $1.5 billion, I ask you to remember, the project will actually be paid for by utility ratepayers, that's us, as a direct pass-through. We pay for the pipeline, and we pay for the rate of return. And so Duke is committing its ratepayers to 20 or more years, that's typically how long the contracts are, of paying for this gas, but they're actually allowing, in their contract, 70% of that contracted capacity to extend all the way to a pooling station in the Gulf. So that creates room for gas to flow from the Appalachian Basin down to the Gulf, but on our dime, and with our risk. So the LNG exporters are not paying for this pipeline. We are paying to widen the highway, the gas highway, that we aren't even going to use.
Next slide, thank you. Transco even admits the lack of benefits. In fact, so we believe, in fact, this project would generate almost no tax revenue and would certainly not create any permanent jobs, there might be temporary jobs available, the Transco typically contracts those jobs out. Further, if tax values decrease on land where a proposed pipeline runs through, that could potentially mean less money for our county, and then, an economy that is tied to fossil fuels, we believe, is unpredictable and certainly makes us vulnerable to supply chain disruptions. We also would just put in a word for renewable energy sources like solar and wind that are more reliable and cheaper. Next slide. So what this Alder, this Board of Aldermen can do, our ask is to protect the rights of landowners and the safety of our community. We ask for you to put your support behind community members that are concerned about more gas being piped through the community that is not going to be used in the community, and we hope you will prioritize those folks here. We are urging each of you to support a resolution in opposition to this proposed pipeline, and we ask that once a resolution is passed, that the town clerk file it with the FERC, and in any state commenting periods with DEQ. These are simple acts that will really speak volumes on behalf of our community and the landowners that are in the direct pathway of this unnecessary project. At this point, saying nothing would be approving the project. Next slide. Here's our contact information that you can follow up with us, and I just really urge you, again, to pass a resolution opposing this project. We are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we have Paul Kelly signed up to speak. I'll recognize Mr. Kelly at this time.
I live at 5859 Fox Point Circle in Winston-Salem. I am a member of the executive committee of the Sierra Club Foothills Group, but I'm really not here representing them, I'm representing veterans. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I go to that medical center, there's a bunch of veterans that need that center, and I suspect I'm not the only veteran in this room who uses it and appreciates it. When I was at a meeting about this pipeline some months ago, and heard that the medical center was in the blast zone of this pipeline, I was furious. How could that be allowed? You know, and, and the fact they're gonna add a fourth pipeline, it's kinda hard to imagine that if one blows, that the other ones won't. Now, I did attend a meeting of the Forsyth County Commissioners, there was a representative of Transco there, he did talk about the blast zone. He seemed to indicate that people's concerns are unnecessary around blasts, that we're all too worried about those, he seemed, he intended to downplay that. He also said that the, these blasts are very rare, that, that they are infrequent and this low risk. You just saw some examples from their presentation, that these blasts do occur. At the same time, I was thinking, coming over here, if someone had talked about the probability of a storm like Hurricane Helene coming in and wrecking a swath of western North Carolina and devastating lives, most people who, who do meteorology, weather stuff would tell you, that kind of storm in that part of the state is very, very low risk. Well, I think the people who lost their homes up there and lost family members aren't real concerned about statistics. And if a low-risk explosion occurs with a VA and the other facilities and buildings in that area, should that blow, I don't think anybody's gonna care much about low-risk probabilities and statistics. So my concern is, this pipeline is unnecessary, as they've explained, the country doesn't need it, it only benefits a few people who are doing quite well already, thank you very much. So I don't see the point in it, and I don't see to put in a pipeline for no really good reason at the risk of, of destroying, or injuring, or in any way damaging other people's property up to and including a VA medical center that so many hundreds of thousands of veterans use. And that's all I have to say, and I really hope that you'll do a resolution to, to stop this. Thank you.
Okay. All right, are there any discussion, comments? All right, are there any discussion, comments, questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item C.
Madam Mayor and Board, you have in your packet a resolution calling for a public hearing for voluntary annexation on a small piece of property out at Watkins Ford Road. I think that same night, maybe you will hear the request for rezoning also.
That's correct. It's tied to the rezoning.
So you have to, this is a 0.2 acres. You have to call for the public hearing this month. Then you'll have the public hearing next month on the annexation. Two-month, two-step process, and this is the first step.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Keith, did you get who made the motion?
Who has the motion and who has the second?
I think it's Chris with the motion.
Chris.
And Bill with the second.
Bill.
Bill. Mayor Pro Tem Thompson with the motion. Alderman Apple with the second. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, item D? Or anything else to do on that one?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Item D then is the consideration of a street closure request and downtown event request by the Home Builders Association of Winston-Salem.
Yeah, this is the, I think the second or third annual, maybe? I know it's the second, is it the third?
Yes.
Home Builder Association 5K. It's, they're nailed at Pumpkin Run 5K and one mile walk. They'll have it at Harmon Park. It'll be on Saturday, October 25th. They'll start loading in at 2:30, and then the event will take place and they'll be out by about 6 o'clock. I think the only road closure will be Harmon Lane, right beside the park, that will be there. There's also a request, I think last year they had, they had a beer garden there in the park. They're requesting that again this year. We reviewed it, staff's in favor of it. They did a great job last year with the event, had a big crowd. So we're looking forward to having it back this year.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson. Seconds are all over the place. Second by Alderman Pennix. All in favor? It's unanimous. I was there the past couple of years. And last year, the Halloween costumes of the children who were running it were adorable. So stop by if you can. Oh, and they had lots of great vendors, too, so.
Yes, should be bigger this year, and we plan on doing the costumes again this year, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we are to item E, consideration of an ordinance for temporary street closures for events at Ivy Redmond Sports Complex. Mr. Swisher?
This is to close the road between Union Cross Road and Bridgeport Drive, October 11th from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And November the 1st from 6:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. October 11th is the invitational cross-country meet that's held out there. And November 1st will be the second day of the state meet. The first day is on Friday. We're not asking to close it that Friday because of the enormous amount of traffic that's already on that road on Friday. Closing it would not help out. Help us out with the cross-country meet, but it wouldn't help out with the traffic that utilizes it on Friday afternoon. Our hope is to be out of there before that traffic gets there. But anyway, these are the two dates that it has historically been closed in the past.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Alderman Pennix.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. Just on the point of the road closures, there are a lot of runners and families and a lot of street crossings. And I heard some very nice compliments earlier this week of one of the families who had a, their daughter runs for, actually Curtis' team, and enjoyed Friday Night Lights quite a bit. And I know Alderman Pennix and others have gone out there to see that. So we appreciate Curtis, your contributions to having Kernersville have an awesome cross-country course and Parks and Rec staff for, for working on that as well. I'm very proud that in Kernersville, our town manager oftentimes will run the course right before the, the meet, so we know it's the best.
I've about aged out of that. I might walk parts of it now.
Perhaps. All right, anything else on that, or we're ready to move on to F? Okay, we've got consideration of a resolution accepting a U.S. EPA Community Grant Award.
This, and I'll start, and if you get some technical questions, Wendy Hardup is here to answer those. This is a grant that I think came up to you all probably three months ago or so. We went back and forth, mainly Wendy and, and the Finance Department. On that grant, we did apply for it. We are, we have been awarded the grant. Now it's up to the Board to accept that grant. You all passed a resolution not long ago asking to where we didn't have to pay the 20% or whatever it was, that we were awarded that as well. So now it's just a $2.4 million. There's no town funds that are required to match that grant. This will be, I think, the third phase, is that correct, Wendy? Of the stream restoration? We just got done with Phase 2. Some of you have been out and seen that, it's turned out really well. Cleared out a lot of the area. They're kind of off the cross-country course. Phase 1, of course, was down behind, I think, Fieldcrest and maybe some of the homes off of Ray Street. So this is Phase 3. It is $2.4 million. We, Wendy has, has talked with them as well as our folks in Finance. The good thing about the grant is, we, we have to budget for all of it upfront, we think. But we don't have to pay for it all upfront. We can, when we pay, when the contractor submits an invoice to us, we pay them. And we can seek reimbursement for that portion of it. So we, the good thing is, we don't have to put out $2.4 million and get it back. We will seek a way, you know, to put in there that if, if the funding for us stops, then we, we stop the project and pay to where we're at on that. So it, it does look like we, we recommend moving forward with the project. I think we've got it to a point now with the grant and everything that, that we can do that. And it will not, it will not put us in a bad financial position, which is what we were worried about before. I think when I, when it first came to you all, I think one of the concerns was, you know, the grant funding agency, whether this agency would even still have some grant funding available, or whether we would start the project and then they tell us, hey, the, the funding's no longer there. The funding will be made available when the project starts and we can draw down from that funding. I think that's, is that correct, Wendy? So we don't have a whole lot of issue thinking that, that the funding will be pulled out from under it. So we, we're comfortable with it, moving forward with it. We think in the end it will be a good project. Some of the, you heard some tonight about, you know, the floodplain and, and the flooding. I think they've looked into the stream restoration. From what I understand, several parts of the stream that will be, have the restoration work done. If nothing's done at some point over a period of time, that will just increase that floodplain area. And then it's too late to go in and, and do something because, you know, some of the pictures you've seen tonight, as Mr. Compton talked about earlier, that 100-year floodplain has, has kind of gotten out there now. And that will, it won't address his issue, but it's another issue in a different part of, of the town there. So that's about as, as much detail as I can give you. If you have any questions, or Wendy, if you'd like to come up and, and add something to that, that would be probably helpful, because that's about as much detail as I know about it.
Part of this property does back up to other houses near Fieldcrest, right?
I think this goes a little bit south of Fieldcrest, probably. It picks up where the first phase was, is that correct, Wendy? Or does this kind of bridge Phase 2 to 1 and then beyond that? Yeah, it might do both of them, or it might not do any of them. But I think it does do one of the two.
And then that would flow into the, one of the sections, the first section we already did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. So the first section that we started was, was right behind the soccer facility. And then we also did up there on Emerald Lane.
So it's between the two. That'll help preserve the work that we did further down, if this is done.
Yeah, so this, this has been eroding into our project that we started with. And with the flashy storms, it's just gotten worse over time. But this was the one that Kathy Manning went with us, Representative Kathy Manning, and a few of the board members. Yeah, it was approved in '23, fiscal year '23. So yeah, it was right around in 2022.
Thank you for your hard work on this. We appreciate it. It's a lot of phone calls and emails that you did to get it to this point. We really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
All right, what, what would the Board like to do?
Madam Mayor, in recognition of that hard work, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed resolution concerning accepting the U.S. EPA Community Grant Award.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Alderman Apple, a second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Swisher, we have item G, consideration of an update to the personnel policy. Please enlighten us.
Yes, the, there was a new state law that was adopted in the 2025 session, enacted this summer that will require all municipalities in North Carolina to subject all applicants for positions that require working with children in any way to criminal history record checks that will be conducted by the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation. So that's a new law. We are required to comply with that, and it will be effective for all new employees on or after October 1st of 2025. So we need to update our personnel policy, and this Board approves those personnel policy changes. So you have those changes in your packet. Again, it is, is simply complying with the state law. We don't have a choice about that. And we do have several positions in the town that, that interact with, with children from time to time, you know, whatever that position may be. Parks and Rec, Police Department, Fire Department, all those folks will have to have that background check.
I got a question, Curtis. You mean y'all don't already do a background check on people?
We do do a background check. We, we, I don't think we do it through the SBI, though, is that correct? Yeah, only police and fire go through SBI.
What's the difference? What's the difference?
In?
In the background check?
I cannot tell you. Ms. Whitley can probably tell you, I couldn't.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I deal with that all the time.
Yeah. I pass my background check, that's all I can tell you, so.
I mean, you know, we always, you know, do a criminal background check. What is it? Yeah, it doesn't sound like anything extra.
I'm going to guess that the one through the SBI is probably more detailed, but I don't know.
I don't know. Tell us, Ms. Whitley.
Yes, sir. The, the background checks that we do for regular employees are criminal background checks. This with the SBI is fingerprints, more detail.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Alderman Barrow.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, we are to item I, item H, consideration of a resolution declaring property surplus and authorizing disposal.
This is the truck wash down at Public Services. Used to be the truck wash, it kind of broke, no longer works. Costs more to fix it than, than it's worth fixing. We can wash the trucks another way and not fix the truck wash. So we're asking the Board to declare, declare it surplus. It does have two 6,000-gallon water tanks that we would have to dispose of otherwise, but the city of Lewisville, town of Lewisville, would like those. So we're asking the Board to declare those surplus. And we will give those to Lewisville, and they can come pick them up, and we will not have to find a way to dispose of those tanks otherwise.
How many gallons are those tanks?
6,000. So they're not really easy to dispose of.
What kind of shape are they in?
What kind of shape are they in? I'm guessing they're still holding water, but that'd be about it.
Curtis, I'd like to specifically request that my friend Mayor Horn accompany whoever comes over here to get those tanks.
And loads them up, yeah.
All right, would you like to make a motion?
I would, ma'am, that we approve the resolution declaring property surplus and authorized disposal with respect to those tanks.
Motion by Alderman Apple?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. And that would be the tanks and the, the car wash equipment, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Or truck wash equipment. All in favor? Opposed? All right, we have Mr. Barrow in opposition. Did you get the motion and the second? All right, we're moving on to item A. Mr. Swisher? I mean, I. Budget amendment.
Yeah, the budget amendment. There are just two changes to the expenditures and two to the revenues. First of those is the increase to government body expenditures by $84,000 to cover outside legal expenses and to adjust the appropriation for Kernersville Little Theater. I think we initially added in the budget a little bit less than what they requested. And we told the Board that, that we would bring that back, to change that. And then the other one is to increase Fire Department expenses for $3,800 to cover repairs following a lightning strike at 43. And the two revenues are the insurance claim to cover that lightning strike and then the appropriation from the general fund to cover the other.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, we are to the consent agenda. All of the following matters are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the matter will be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the following items. A, approval of minutes for the August 27 regular meeting. B, approval of minutes for the September 2 regular meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to see any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any board member, staff member, who'd like to see either item A or B removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It is unanimous. All right, the town managers report.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of items. The first of those, you just heard from Angie Whitley, our new HR Director, her first meeting. So she got a good meeting tonight. She has started in that position. As you know, Crystal Tanner's still here until the end of the year. Beside of her is Chris Jensen, who will be the new Public Services Director. He will take over next week, I think, on probably Thursday, Friday, Wednesday, when Dorn officially retires. So he will move into that position. I will update you, Chris is currently the town engineer, so we will be hiring a town engineer to fill his position. Along with that, I think we are going to move a position over from street inspections and create a junior engineer as well. We were getting ready to do that before Chris got the position, but we are still moving forward with that to help in the engineering review of plans and everything. We need, we need that position now, and that's the best way to go ahead and fill it. We also need the street inspector, but we can kind of, they can kind of do a dual role on that until next year when the budget comes around, and we'll probably look at filling that street inspector, creating a new position. But we can move the current street inspector over to an open position and then create the junior engineer. So Chris will be busy hiring a couple of folks as soon as he moves over as department head next week. So he'll have something on his plate as soon as he gets there with that. The other item I have, I know it's been a while, but I think the Board, the Board asked last year, maybe, or earlier this year. the board asked last year maybe, or earlier this year, for a plaque honoring Dr. Whitaker to be erected at the parking lots. That has been done. Mayor Morgan, Alderman Pennix, and Heidi, Heidi Tuft met with, with that in mind the other day. And up until about two minutes ago, I actually had the email with the wording on the plaque. I will forward that to you because I'm not sure I can find that wording. Let me see if I'm finding.
I'd like to express appreciation to Rick Dappin, her daughter, finding the newspaper article from her friend and sharing that with the town of Kernersville, which helped us to get some of the history of Dr. Whitaker, to create the wording for this plaque. Thank you very much, Rick, for, for that contribution to Kernersville's history.
Yes, and I'd.
And if you'll, hang on a second, the discussion spurred that Mr. Pennix had plans to see some of Dr. Whitaker's family, Dr. Whitaker's family, and obtained a great photograph. So we're going to use that photograph as well. So again, appreciation to, to all. Go ahead, Mr. Swisher.
And I got lucky and found it a second time. So the verbiage on the plaque will, will read, Dr. Richard Whitaker, 1907 to 1999, and beloved wife Marty, 1913 to 1990, provided medical care within the community for over 50 years. Dr. Whitaker delivered more than 7,000 babies during his career. The Whitakers never denied anyone medical treatment, even when they couldn't afford to pay. Through their dedication and kindness, they helped share, helped shape the well-being of Kernersville. The office was originally in the Whitaker home at this site. And so we'll have that, that'll be on a marker similar to what is at the beginning and end of the Greenway, and we, it will be erected there on site at the new parking lot.
And Heidi is working with community development to make sure we comply with all the ordinances that everyone else has to comply to relating to signage and historical markers. So we've got it all covered. Thank you, Mr. Swisher, for the.
Yeah, thank y'all for, for your work on that, and I think that will be a great way to honor Dr. Whitaker. As you can hear, he did do a lot in the community through the years. 7,000 babies, that's quite an accomplishment. That's about a, at the time, that was probably 75% of the people in Kernersville. It's still a fourth of the folks in Kernersville, but at the time, it was probably 75% of the folks in Kernersville, so.
And having been raised here in Kernersville, you know, I can tell you that that plaque, I mean, it, it doesn't go anywhere near explaining what he's done for the town.
That is correct.
You know, I can't tell you how many times I've been in that house over there, sick, me and my brothers and sisters and everybody. And like you said in the plaque, he, he wouldn't turn anybody down. And when he got so old that he couldn't practice anymore, he still helped people. They would go to his house, and, you know, it was just amazing. He worked as long as he could. Amazing.
Maybe we can get something in the, one of the Kernersville magazines or something like that about, about him. Mr. Pennix, did you want to say anything about this? You brought it up to begin with when the town purchased that house and built the parking lot.
Well, I don't have time to say everything I'd like to. Probably one of the mistakes he made, he delivered me. But in the old city hospital, before we had Forsyth Hospital, that's giving away my age. But he delivered me and he delivered my two sons. So it just went on and on. And he never, it's like John said, he never turned away anybody. Well, and they'd go there, and then they'd come get my granddaddy out of bed, and he never turned away anybody either. He'd go down and open the drugstore. So it was a different world back then, but a lot of people think it's better now. Sometimes I think it was better then. I know people in Kernersville were a lot healthier.
Yeah, and his office, when it wasn't at his house, his office, the town now owns the building that is his office, or was his office, is the, what is now the SOD building. And like Joe, one of the other mistakes he made was he delivered me about 30 years after he delivered Joe. Quite 30 years. But you would, I mean, you would go to his office and then walk up to Joe's if you were well enough, or even if you weren't well enough, you'd walk up to Pennix and get your prescription. And as Mr. Copton alluded to earlier, you'd go upstairs at Joe's and get your teeth worked on, so. You're either gonna make it or break it right here in the circle. I don't know. Not sure how that worked out, but somehow we survived. Joe didn't slip me any bad medicine, I guess.
Thank you for your comments about Dr. Whitaker, John, and Joe, and Curtis, and Eric. All right, what's next, Curtis?
I think that is all. Just, I looked at the board. Ernie asked me tonight, and we've been, been handing out some stuff to the board, showing what we've done. And tourism, we haven't had as many activities in the rec center over the summer, but we've, we've started cross-country season and soccer and baseball. And if you, if you want to go down to Ivy Rhythm Park, probably don't go on a weekday at 5:30, 6 o'clock, not if you're in a hurry to get out, because you won't get out in a hurry. But we've had two, three cross-country meets, two during the week. One of them had about 750 runners and probably somewhere around about 2,500 folks there just spectating. The other one was Tuesday. I think it had about 600 runners and probably another 2,000 people spectating. And I think this year, Friday Night Lights, I haven't seen the final numbers on it, but going into that night, he had 3,600 and some runners signed up, which may make it the largest meet in the state. There might be one in Cary that's a little bit bigger, but he had about 3,600 and some runners signed up. And I think Ernie looked on Placer AI that night, and there was about 10,000 people there in the park. So went well. I think Ernie's folks, PD, PD did a great job because we did not close Shields Road, and, and we got everybody in and out. They did a much better job at Friday Night Lights than, than we did a couple of weeks ago during the week when we were trying to get folks in, and we had them jammed up to about the sheets. So we've got them, we have to improve what we did, me and the other guy. We weren't directing traffic real good, but we'll make it better next time.
You can hire an off-duty police officer, Curtis.
And he had, I think, was it the Chair City Classic Soccer Tournament two weeks ago? That was, was huge. They had a, had a good crowd for that. If you go down there, you can see the, the two houses the town bought last year. They've since been torn down. They've now became a parking lot, have a lot of folks parking where those houses used to be. So that's worked out well. And they've got, I think, middle school baseball or softball down there probably about every day as well. So it's pretty busy from about 4 o'clock on to about 8:30, 9 o'clock at night. And a lot of it's folks coming in from, from out of town. And if you don't believe they're shopping just, or eating here, just go to Dario and try to get through the line at about 8 o'clock. Take a little while, but they have a good crowd.
I think we ought to take a moment now, and let's do a round of applause for Angie and Chris. Welcome as, as department heads. We've worked with you both for a long time now, but we'll be seeing you a lot now. If you need it, Ed usually has some caffeinated beverages you can borrow. All right, sometimes these meetings go late, as you know. All right. Anything else other than comments from the Alderman? Mr. Pennix, what would you like to say tonight?
Um, no, ma'am, I have nothing.
Mr. Gorham?
No comments?
Mr. Apple?
Nothing.
Mr. Barrow?
I got one thing.
All right, talk in the microphone.
Okay, I'll talk to a microphone. I got one thing. A, a citizen contacted me and said they sure did enjoy the citizen, the civitan park, with one exception. They said when they're walking at night, it's really dark behind the ball field, Ernie. And he said they need more lights back there so that, he said he wasn't scared, but women wouldn't walk back there at night, so. If there's something we could do about that, and I did ride over and look at it. He was right. At night, it is dark back there. The walking trails, what he's talking about.
Is there, I think there's a light over there. It may be out. Okay.
We could work on that.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Be a good thing. Yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
I have nothing. Thank you very much.
So on the issue of lights, I have heard many people comment that there should be some lighting on the Greenway. And I know we don't want to encourage nighttime use, but I think some people have found that maybe they underestimate at what point in time it's going to become dark. So I'm not sure what we can do to create a little light, but not enough to encourage nighttime use. But I just wanted to mention that.
We'll, we'll check and see. I mean, the problem there is there's no power at all to run anything to the lights. We might can look at maybe some solar lights. We have one of those up down at Ivy, and it doesn't, doesn't really generate a tremendous amount of light, but it's better than nothing. But, yeah, there's no, I don't think there's any power anywhere down through there where you can pull the power to get to a light if you were to put one up. We'll look into it and see. There may be, you know, we might can put them kind of at the beginning and the end, at least help them.
Oh, see, ahead.
Get off and get to their car. And maybe in the middle where the, where you get to the townhomes, there might be power right in that area.
If you, if y'all didn't hear, Ernie said at a conference there were some trail lights that were solar powered.
We'll look into some different options to see if there's a way to kind of light it a little bit.
Maybe we can keep that in mind as infrastructure as we develop other areas of the park.
Yeah, it'd be much easier, you know, as a park develops, it'd be a lot easier because there'd be power through different areas of the park. But we'll look into it, see if there's a way to do something now.
Okay. All right, is there any further business before the board this evening? Oh, wait.
And Madam Mayor, we do have a need for a closed session.
Oh, that, all right. And Keith, when is our next meeting?
The next one is scheduled for October 8th, but we do not currently have anything on that agenda, which is why there was no briefing on the October 8th meeting items. There's nothing to brief.
So should we vote to remove that meeting, or?
You, you can vote to remove it if you want. You wouldn't have to. You could cancel it without a vote. But if you'd like for the board to vote on it, that's.
I was just asking procedurally, because we usually don't have that come up.
Yeah, procedurally either way is fine.
Yeah, you can do it either way. You can, you can cancel it and nothing comes up next week, and just cancel the meeting, or you can vote tonight to cancel it, but.
Should the board, we had to move it from the normal Tuesday because of the election schedule this year. May have had an election on Tuesday night, so we moved it to Wednesday night next week.
It's actually a week, I think it's a week after next, it's on the 8th.
Oh, right, week after.
Right, it, normally it would have been October 7th. That was a potential runoff, primary runoff date. So the board chose to move it to October 8th, which is a Wednesday, so it's already on an off day.
I would just wait until the end of next week, and if nothing comes up, you can cancel.
All right, so right now, that's why you didn't get the agenda for it. There's no agenda items. So we'll keep it reserved. If you could keep Wednesday night, the 8th, at 6:30, reserved for a possible meeting if we need it for some other issue that may have a short deadline, then we'll have it as a placeholder.
I, I think Curtis would tell you, we, we will probably know by the middle of next week if, if we actually need a meeting on the 8th.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
All right, unless anybody has something they want to have on that agenda? Okay, we'll keep you posted then. Keep, keep an eye out for either a meeting agenda to come out or a cancellation notice. It would have to be at least two days before the meeting, so, but the clerk has indicated the decision will be made sooner, based on what we know at the moment, right?
Right, by the, you know, again, by late next week. If we don't have anything on the agenda, we can send out the notice that it's canceled. And if we do have items for the agenda, we'll send out the meeting notice with the agenda.
Okay. All right, so it looks like we'll have a closed session. Do I have a motion for the closed session?
Madam, Madam Mayor, I hereby make a motion pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-3, 18.1183, to enter into closed session to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gorham, second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, we are now in closed session. We are now in closed session.
Good evening and welcome back to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Is there any further business before the board this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sir moved.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson? Seconded by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Get down here before 11 o'clock.
That's close.